January. January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two budget workshop. Want to welcome our, any guests we have and also the Rick, Rick Kennedy with the Helena West Helena World and KJIW, any other media that we might have that I don't see or know about. Just to refresh for the public's information, these are not official city council meetings and that they're they're, they're budget workshops, no legal action that takes place. And we are. We can do this every winter and because of the COVID surge that we've had lately, we're doing our budget workshops remotely. They've zoomed, but we'll, we before the budget is enacted, which has to be before February first or on, on February first will be, we'll, we'll have a legal meeting according to what the municipal and our city attorney says is say are, say is a legal meeting and and we'll take action in that form. But in the meantime, it does comply with public meetings laws. And so we do inform the public and it is a public meeting. And it's an important meeting. So tonight we're going to discuss the water bill. Is that right, Mr. Turner? Though not the water bill, the water, the water budget, water department. So I'm going to turn it over to Derek Turner, our city treasurer, who works hard this time of the year on our budget, Mr. Turner.
Okay, well, in regards to the water department's budget, there, there nothing out of the ordinary concerning operations that are expected for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, and there are no special projects planned as of yet. So in that regard, but, but considering that the water and sewer rates. Well, back in two thousand and nineteen, the city council decided to increase water rates and sewer rates. And they also decided to index that to the consumer price index on an annual basis so that the sewer and the water sewer race would increase in accordance or in relation to the consumer price index. In two thousand and twenty-one, as everyone is probably well aware of that there was a significant amount of inflation during two thousand and twenty-one. And so the CPI, the Consumer Price Index or the inflation rate from twenty, December two thousand and twenty-two, December two thousand and twenty-one was seven percent. And so that seven percent increase was the highest increase, I believe, since June of nineteen eighty-two. And so that seven percent increase is reflected in the revenue projections for the water department. And I project an increase of about three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in water revenues. And I also project an increase in total expenditures of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So and the inflation rate is also reflected in the water department's expenditures as well. What's interesting about that is that the water rates, the, the, the water expenditures, the water department is experiencing those that inflation throughout the year. And the water rate increase is only once a year. So we're kind of, you know, a year behind and trying to catch up with inflation as far as the water rates are concerned. But other than that, the the budget just has just regular operations. Like I said, there, there are no extraordinary items that have been requested. And as far as I know of, there are no special projects that are planned. The water department budget does include the four percent cost of living increase for the water department employees as well. I'm trying to think if there's anything. Oh, okay. And with the water revenues, I want to discuss the water deal, kind of get some calculations. And the average residential water bill, which is water, sewer sanitation and late charges or whatever. The average monthly bill for residential customers was seventy-four dollars and eleven cent. And so I've done some recalculations with the seven percent increase, cost of living increase that, that, that average bill would be approximately seventy-seven dollars and eleven cents. And so it'll be around a three dollar increase in the average residential bill. The commercial customers' average bill in two thousand and twenty-one was one ninety-five fifty-two. And I projected that considering the seven percent increase in those rates, that those, that average bill would be about two hundred and three dollars and eighty-one cent, about eight dollars and twenty-eight cent increase in their, in their monthly bills on average. And so I know the mayor's asked the city council to suspend the increase in water sewer rates. And so that's where those bills would sit with the increase. But like I said, this, it's about seventy-four dollars right now. Average residential bill and that would increase to about seventy-seven dollars. And the average commercial bill is now a little over one hundred and ninety-five dollars and that would increase to about two hundred and three dollars. So if anyone has any questions or comments, open the floor. For, for anyone that has any questions.
What do you mean when you say there are no planned projects? Because people are constantly posting pictures of their water. So does that mean it's going to be like it is? I don't understand.
Let me pardon me for not missing the rules. You wouldn't know, you wouldn't know this because I didn't say it, but we, we only take questions from elected officials and city council members during these workshops. I would invite you though to use your message app on here. I'll let anybody who wants to answer those questions, but we don't take questions. There's a process that's been approved by the council for public comment and it's not, we don't do it on Zoom. So so I apologize. It's my fault for not saying that at the, at the front end. So I apologize, but hadn't said that.
Well, I asked the question at the council now, but the same question that she just asked. I'm opposed to question to this is Miss I think she wants for you to explain it more of what you're saying is going to happen with the deal.
I couldn't hear. I, I didn't get the question. It was going in and out.
Okay, she asked the question, uh, could you explain what do you, what you're saying is going to happen with the water bill? I think right now it has to be suspended. That means stay where it is, not to, to do the increase. But she's not understanding exactly what you're saying about the deal. She wants you to explain that.
Okay, well, like I said, in two thousand and twenty nineteen, the city council increased water and sewer rates. And they also decided to, to increase them annually. Index to the consumer price index. So this year, the water sewer race would increase by seven percent. Let, let me try to pull up the, I have a spreadsheet with the, with that information in it. And so when I was stating that what the average bill was, what I was doing was I was taking the monthly billing and dividing it by the, the amount of residential customers that we had during a particular month. And so I took that average, that, that came out to be about seventy-four dollars and eleven cent. Hold on, let me pull up my memo.
Hi Derek, while you're doing that, I think.
And so it, it looks like this year, the water rates were up well for two thousand and twenty-one. The water rates were fourteen dollars and twenty-one cent for the first thousand gallons. And so now there'll be fifteen dollars, fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents for the first thousand dollars, for, first thousand gallons. So that's a dollar increase in the sewer rate. The water rate increased, I mean, the water rate, the sewer rate increased a little over a dollar, like a dollar and no, okay, sewer rates. You can go on, Mayor. Go, go on and state what you were stating, Mayor, and let me.
I think I know what she was asking and it is a good question. I think if I'm not mistaken, what, what her question is, what do we mean by no new projects? And I, I think the answer to that would be in the budget itself, there are no planned new projects. And one good example of that would be replacement of, you know, brittle aging water lines, which are really behind a lot of the water leaks that we have. They're repeating leaks. We're getting ready. I mean, right now we're having leaks that we've already fixed two or three times because of the weather. Excuse me. So we're, we plan a lot of catch-up in the water department after years and years and years of not having rates that were consistent with the times. And so as a result of that, a lot of the money that might have gone to that sort of investment couldn't go to that investment. So now we're trying to this is my answer. I can only speak for myself. We're trying to rebuild the water department from years and years of sort of hand-to-mouth existence. And as anybody knows who drives around, we have a lot of needs. So yes, there are a lot of needs for new projects. No, there's not a lot of ongoing revenue in the budget to adequately deal with those. So by example, years ago, City West Helena Municipal, back when it was two cities, routinely invested about a half a million dollars a year in water line replacements and they were trying to keep up with the need. That was a long time ago. That hasn't happened in a long time. We really are trying to get ourselves back to that place and we're not there yet because it's only been a couple of years. I don't know if that answered your question. I'm not, I'm not reading over here, but that's one answer. The other answer is, and, and I guess I might as well go and talk about this now because Derek introduced it. The American Rescue Act that maybe a lot of people have read about or heard about is federal money that's been sent to cities and states and counties to do a lot of things. And we just got the final rule, which the federal government is, is difficult to work with sometimes. There's still I think ninety days to comment on the final rule or something, but it is called the final rule. It came out, I think it was last week. And with, with some major exceptions, it's a lot more flexible now for cities. And I guess my point is that, and I support index to get to inflation. I supported it when we did it. I think we should return to it. Seven percent, the largest since nineteen eighty-two. If you count the three and a half percent or so, that's over ten percent in addition to the rate increases that we did. With all the inflationary pressures on the consumer, I think in the, one of the poorest communities in the country, I think that's a lot to ask on a basic service like water. When I was in legislature, I helped or tried to help remove the tax on, the state sales tax on groceries. Because it was considered a basic need. We were one of only three states that still taxed groceries at the state level. Water is an even more basic service. It's also cheaper, but and I don't know that I would feel this way, except that we, we are. And if you, for that is with the budget, if you look on I'm, I'm always lucky to give page numbers, but I think it's page twenty-five. Shows the Rescue Act, no, it's not. It's twenty-seven, sorry. It shows, but it shows in the preparation for the budget and the budget for the Rescue Act funds we're expecting to see, receive in May. And it just seems to me there's a win-win to use that for these projects to fix our water system that we don't normally have the funding to do and at the same time give our right payers a break while we go through this really significant inflationary time. So that's a long answer. So I'll be quiet.
I mean, man, but what I meant was that, that there are no, there are needs, but there, there is not a formalized plan. We, we haven't, no one has said has sat down and said, hey, we're going to fix these streets or this area. I mean, we do it as a priority need right now. You know, we try to fix what's the more pressing needs, but there hasn't been a formalized plan to say, we're going to fix this area first. We're going to do these streets as far as I know. And so that's what I meant when I said there's not, there are no projects. That, that's what I mean, something that was formalized. We said, this is what we're going to do. We know how much it's going to cost. We know what the areas we're going to fix. And we know how much it's going to cost. That's, that's what I meant as far as that. When, I, I'm not sure if this is what Wanda was meaning, but as far as the bills were concerned, the water rates are going to go up a dollar. The sewer rates are going to go up about fifty-seven cent. And so that, and I, when I was discussing about the average water bill, the average amount of the water bill, I was including the water sewer. I was including all the fees and taxes and everything. So I'm thinking the average bill would go up about three dollars. So I'm not exactly sure about how much detail they want to go into about the bills or anything else, but that's what I meant about the bills. And what I meant about the special projects was that there's nothing that we haven't had a formalized plan to do any particular areas or any particular streets.
I, I'm sorry I'm late, but I did catch the part about the formalized plan. And that is something that I can agree with.
I will say that I reached out to our civil engineer again to see if we made any progress on trying to get a formalized plan to the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission, USTA Real Development and a few other agencies that require a detailed analysis and usually prefer an engineer to do it. And I'm still waiting to hear back from him, but we've got approximate amounts, but we need we need a specific plan and application to go before them to get approved. And if you look in your, but you'll see page twenty-nine, down at the bottom, there's bond payments and there are loan payments. Some of this would be loan money, low interest loan money that we'd have to pay back and some of it we hope would be grants. We've also reached out to Senator Bozeman's office and and to see what we can do in terms of getting some federal help for funding some of these, because there's no question about the need. And I think we all agree with that. The question is, how do we get there? And I think the Rescue Act is a manna from heaven. I mean, it's, it was expected really. And it's, it's probably our greatest, most urgent need here. And we I, I'll give you one example of, you know, what do we spend about two hundred thousand dollars a year on renting bypass pumps? Anybody that wants to answer that? Somewhere in that neighborhood, Jeff or Sandy or Eric or?
Yes, sir. At least.
Somewhere, somewhere in that neighborhood. If we replace those bypass pumps with pumps that work, the permanent pumps, we would save that lease money. You know, so that's spending good money to get rid of bad. And that's, that's basically practically an investment at this point. Not to mention it's more reliable and it's cheaper to maintain and all of those things. So that's just one example, but we also have, and I, I want to stress this, we are federally and state regulated. Which makes sense. You're talking about the most basic of services, water. So there are clean water laws at the federal and state level, there are regulations of the health department regulations by EQ. We have to follow. We don't really have an option. And those things are expensive. So our water reservoir tanks that need to be inspected, cleaned out, those are, you know, reservoir hill. The early estimate for that is somewhere in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars. And it's never been done. And yet we're way past due on the state inspection. We have a section of pipe and we rely on that so much that in order to draw down that tank and not lose water or water pressure to our customers, we have, our engineers recommending that we replace another pipe so that it can handle the pressure. To make a long story short, it won't burst because he's afraid that it would. He's not sure. He doesn't know, but he's just, it, it needs to be replaced anyway. Well, that's, that's a hundred thousand dollar project at least. It does need to be replaced anyway. So let's do it now, draw down the reservoir so that we don't have to worry about it. And then we can clean out that reservoir. So you can kind of see how quickly it gets to be complicated and why an engineer needs to be involved. But you can also see why it can be quickly very expensive. I'd ask, and this is absolutely an armchair guess, but somewhere based on what experts have told me, somewhere maybe upwards of twenty million dollars in unmet need. And obviously we don't have that kind of money. So but it starts with an engineer-approved plan and application and that's where we are.
And, man, I'd like to also, you know, in in regards to the, in, in lieu of not having a formalized plan, and I know we have a lot of water leaks and a lot of repairs that, that are needed. And so in lieu of not having a formalized plan, that's why I've incorporated those costs into general operations. And so I think the cost of repairs and supplies and things like that, I, I, it actually increased them about, about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So I, I have incorporated those additional costs, even though we don't have a formalized plan, I have tried to incorporate that those repairs and costs into the current budget.
Right. Right. Yeah, good. And we'll use every bit of it, I guarantee you. Now, I, I think a lot of things have been improved since the rates were increased. But just not enough because it's, it's, you couldn't raise rates enough to pay for all the you know, we're twelve years or whatever it was that we went without keeping pace. We were the second to lowest water rates in the state. And the company, the, the city that beat us was a small town that's since gone. The company has since been taken over by the state and bankrupt. And that's where we were headed. So part of the problem is we're dealing with a lot of history here and we haven't, we're trying to play catch-up, but we have done a lot with not a lot of money. And trying to pay our bills, we've had, it's, it's a chicken and egg thing. We'll probably, if temperatures continue to get bad, like last year, we're going to have emergencies that cost a lot more money than it would have been if we had been maintaining it all along, investing in it all along, but we didn't. And so we're paying the price of that unfunded maintenance now. And we will probably have water emergencies this winter and it will be expensive. And so that will affect our cash flow in the spring and summer when we don't have as many emergencies. It's very difficult to break out of that downward spiral that you get into. But I would say that we, we've, we've ended the downward spiral and, and we, we're stabilizing the company. But we got a long way to go. And when it comes to unmet maintenance even further, but we have done some things and I guess Jeff is on there if he wants to address any of those things, but we got so much more to do. I, I don't talk about it much because there is so much to do still, but we had, we have, we have made improvement. We're about to get, for example, a generator, a, a large generator for the Helena plant and another generator that we can move around that'll be used at our booster stations. When we had the Easter storm and a few, on a few other occasions, the electricity goes down at the water plant first, and it's also the first place energy goes to turn it back on because they know when you have a hospital, when you have a nursing home on that system, that the first thing we have to do is restore water. But it does go down and we did not have a generator that worked that was, that backed up the plant. And thanks to the Delta Regional Authority, thanks to John Edwards' help, we're about to, with grant funding, we're about to receive any day now a large permanent generator for the Helena plant. And, and like I said, the, the temporary one, which we'll be able to use at the pump, at the at all, any of the stations that go down, but most likely it'll, it'll be the, the one on Oakland that pushes, pushes the water uphill to the hospital and nursing home and the one that goes down the most often. And during the Easter storm, had we not had other people come in with generators, we would have been in real trouble. Because all this operates on a gravity-fed system. And once it gets down to so low, we were like this the last winter and we were literally seconds away from the whole city being without water. It's very, it's just like our city's finances. It's, it's, it's very difficult, much harder in the early phases to build that pressure back up. So the booster station on Oakland, when it goes down, we're only operating on, on gravity. So, and that, that pushes gravity uphill, pushes water uphill to some of our most important institutions. And so we have to have a generator that can go there on an emergency basis. We haven't had that, but we're about to. So there are improvements. It's just that we have so much more to do.
Can I be heard?
Yeah, and I probably should have said department heads are also, when called upon, are allowed to speak and answer questions. So yes, sir, Mr. Patterson is our general manager for the water department. Mr. Patterson, you recognize?
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to elaborate on what the mayor said. We are making small steps toward getting our infrastructure the way that the city wants it to be. As he said, we do have a long way to go, a very long way to go. Right now, my purpose and my goal is to get some of these lift stations repaired, replaced, and get these bypass pumps back to the company that they came from. These bypass pumps are costing us ninety to a hundred thousand dollars a month. We don't need that. We can take that money and fix infrastructure, pipes, water lines that are deteriorating throughout the city of Helena and West Helena. Speaking on the booster station of Oakland, a generator is in dire need at that station. As he said about the hospital, kidney care and the Crest Park home, we got to have water. I can't speak enough on what we need as a water department to the city council to stress how important it is for us to first get our treatment systems, our treatment plants working and in good condition to get a city good water. Two, the wells, the high-service pumps, the tanks themselves. They have to be maintained according to state and federal regulations. And these regulations, they do strictly enforce. I talked to ADEQ, I talked to the health department and I talked to the EPA almost every day. And this being a city as old as it is and an infrastructure as old as it is, you know, it's it's hard to explain to a health department the problems that you have. They try to work with you. But when you can't get things fixed in a timely manner, they have no alternative but to do their job. And I can't blame them. And I can't blame them. So I'm here stressing to you, the city by, the city council body, to come together with us. And let's try to fix these problems, you know, little at a time. We can't do it all together because it would cost too much money, but we can start by making a footstep forward. Um, I have gave the mayor a list of important lift stations that are in dire need of repair or replace. And. I hope that by presenting these to you, that are, you can see the importance of them. And make your voice, make your vote. A good one, and let's get this city back to where it was. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff, well said. I was gonna point out to citizens on listening, one of the things that began really before I got here, um, but we completed it after I got here, the, the. And it, you know, when you talk about sewage, nobody really wants to talk about that, it's not very fun, but it's awfully essential. We uh, our, our sewage treatment ponds in the south of Helena were out of compliance and. Emergency situation and um. Were imminent threat uh going into the Mississippi River, which would probably have been a national story. Um, the Delta Regional Authority once again gave us money and then gave us some more money. After I became mayor to complete the entire uh sewage pond and update it um. The whole, the entire sewage pond system, so. We don't really talk about it a lot, but that was a, that was a very expensive project, had to be done. The uh, we were out of compliance, there, there had been earlier sewage ponds in West Helena that had been dealt with. We've also done some things to improve maintenance there so that it doesn't get like that again. The. There, like I said, there have been a lot of improvements, we've improved a couple of wells, we're waiting on. Easements, legal easements to reconnect electricity uh over. Jeff, what's the number, name, number that station ever by, on Plazem? I forgot the number of it, but there's a. Over by.
Uh, number eight well.
Number eight well, we needed that well last year when we had the crisis in West Tellingham. Uh, which, by the way, that's another good example, unfortunately, we waited until there was a crisis and an emergency, but we did fix. Uh, the aerator over there in West Helena, improvements did get made, they just uh aren't getting made. To meet the level of the need, because the level of need is so high and so emergent. Uh, we are going in the right direction. What I would tell our customers is that um. It's like the whole city, we're making a lot of progress, it's just a long way to go, and we are by no means there, and um. So definitely had improvements and progress in the right direction, and that's more than you can say for. A lot of the, the last decade, say. Mr. Turner, I'm gonna turn it back to you.
I think I've, I've stated all that I need to state that I can think of right now, and I uh, ask the city council, do they have any more questions or comments?
Uh, I just want to address, if I can, I comment on the. So I, uh, we're, I think, Mr. Patterson, we're waiting on a estimate uh any day now. Anytime now, on the lake, it's in the woods over in Oak Forest section. That um, there's a break in a sewage line over there. And it's a, it's not in the residential area itself, but it's close enough that uh. It is still on site marine, it is still not, and it's still out of compliance with federal and state law, so it wouldn't matter, nobody knew about it, still have to. Do something about it, and we're waiting on an estimate, we should have it. I would say no later than tomorrow. I'm, I'm certain it'll be over my five thousand dollar spending limit, so we'll probably have to meet on that. Um, when we have our meeting on the budget, we'll probably have to throw that in there because. We are required by federal and state law, fix it. We also have a stormwater problem, this is not unusual, especially with older cities. When, and the weather has changed, we get um downpours, um flash flooding. Whereas when somebody, imagine going up, it was uh rain falling gently on the plain, now it comes like in buckets. And that overwhelms our uh infrastructure that was built, that was not built to design for that. So what happens is the water goes into our sewer drains, and it backs everything up, so. Uh, we've had sewage backed up in some of our streets in North Helena. Um, and a few other places when we have these deluges of rainfall, it goes into our stormwater. So if you hear talk about stormwater, it's not just the flooding that's the problem, and it is a flooding, flash flooding is a problem, just the flooding alone, it's a safety issue, it's a lot of things. But it also is water into our store, into our sewer drains, it ends up in those sewer ponds. And we have to treat it as if it were sewer water, so it's more expensive and it's, it's a real problem. So the stormwater draining, draining issue is related to our sewage issue, but more importantly. When it backs up in residential neighborhoods or any neighborhood or any place, you know, it's a violation of many health regulations and it should be. So we're required by law to, to deal with that. Anyway, I just wanted to start that, because I saw that, I'll be quiet. Okay, I'm uh, asking if there are any questions now, be a good time to ask them. All right, it's six forty. There's not anything else, there's really no reason to stay on here and look at each other. Anybody, anything else, Mr. Turner, you wanna wrap it up?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if no one has any other questions, uh, like I said, I'm always available to the city council to have any questions or. Uh, needs some additional information to help them making decisions, just give me a call, come back to office, send me an email. Um, like, and before, I, you know, I'd just like to, to state again how much the race is gonna go up, just in case anyone didn't hear. Um, the actual water race is gonna go up a dollar, they're gonna go up from fourteen twenty-one for the first thousand to fifteen twenty-one. And the, a dollar increase in the sewer race are gonna go up from um. Eight dollars and fourteen cent to eight dollars and seventy-one cent, which is a fifty cent, which is a fifty-seven cent increase. Uh, and I also projected about a three dollar increase uh in the average residential bill. And so uh, city council has any questions with, with regards to the increase in the water sewer race and uh how I came up with the numbers I did to uh. Come up with the average bill and average increase in the bills, just give me a call, uh, send me an email, come back to my office anytime. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
All right, um.
I have a question.
Yes, thank you.
My question is, um, hey, I heard you say that you had talked with some engineers that about something. Uh, was gonna cost like a hundred thousand dollars. About reservoir hill.
Yes.
Okay, do we have that information?
Uh, that came from Mr. Wallen, and I have not. Uh, it's, it's a rough estimate, he hasn't given an actual estimate from an actual company to do it. Um, I asked him, asked me if he would do that, and I'm hoping I'll get that anytime now.
Oh, okay. So when you get it, we are getting it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, any other, any other questions? All right, well, thank y'all, I put over in the comments our website, because that's a, got a link to it, how to contact us. And for those who um. Yeah, okay, and as Helen pointed out, we're gonna meet Thursday again at six o'clock, and there we'll be, we'll discuss court and administrative budgets. In the meantime, as Mr. Turner pointed out, contact us uh in between uh with any questions you might have or, or information that you need. All right, anything else before we go? If not, we'll close out the budget uh session tonight, thank all of you for attending, and we'll see you Thursday.
Have a good evening.